All right, the time is 5:00 PM. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Ms. Park Garcia can have a roll call please.
Mayor Walter.
Here.
Vice Mayor Woolridge.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Gleene will not be here this evening. Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you so much. At this moment, I need a motion for adjournment to the executive session.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn to executive session.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign. We will return after we come back from executive session. Need a motion to adjourn from executive session?
Make a motion to adjourn from executive session?
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Let's stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Call to the Public is for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the Town Council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be placed on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless those matters are properly noted for discussion and legal action. I do have one call to the public, Mrs. Ruth Harrison regarding the historic district.
Ruth Harrison, Florence, Arizona. I'm here tonight to urge you to save the historic walls of the former Cocapelli Saloon. Sure, clear away the burned material, but leave the walls standing. Then stabilize the walls, install a simple roof, and pour a cement floor. This town cannot lose another old building on Main Street. By the way, has the building been evaluated by structural engineers who are experienced in dealing with old historic buildings, those with walls made of adobe and brick? Has it been evaluated by contractors whose expertise is in working to bring buildings made of adobe and brick back to life? Life is what we lose if we lose this building. The historic district opportunity zone exists to keep that from happening. Investors who want to save money on capital gains can take advantage of opportunities to rehabilitate distressed properties in the historic district north of Butte. This building offers just such an opportunity. The town needs to get the word out. Another way of approaching this issue is to appeal to the local citizens of Florence. Recently, town staff talked about setting up an economic development nonprofit organization. It would be able to accept tax deductible donations for projects such as the one we're talking about tonight. As of now, that organization, under the auspices of town government, does not exist. But there are other nonprofit groups in town, including the IDA, which has worked closely with town government on many projects over the years. If we, local citizens, can trust that our donations will be used as promised, we can be very generous. Town government, a nonprofit, and Florence residents can work together to make this a successful project. Granted, life and legalities can be complicated, but where there's a will, there's a way. We want to bring this building back to life. We hope you do too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Harrison. I hope you stick around for item 12, which is the special meeting with the Historic District Advisory Committee. Is there any other member of the audience who would like to speak at Call to the Public at this time? I don't see anybody, so closing Call to the Public. Item number eight is a work session on land use assumptions, infrastructure improvements plan, and development fee update.
Mayor, members of council, the first step in updating the fees in a development and adoption of a land use assumption and infrastructure improvement plan. Residents may view this plan at Town Hall, or it is uploaded on the Town of Florence website. Just a reminder of important dates for this plan. On Monday, October 1st, the Town of Florence did publish on our website the land use assumptions and infrastructure improvement. Tonight, we are having our work session, and we have invited all stakeholders to be present as well. On December 3rd, we will be holding our public hearing on the land use assumption and infrastructure improvement plan. On January 7th, we will be having a work session on development impact fees. And on January 7th, we will be adopting the land use assumption and infrastructure plan. On March 11th, we will be holding a public hearing on development impact fees. On April 15th, we will put forth an ordinance to adopt those impacts fees. And on July 1, 2019, the development impact fees would be effective. The Town Council entered into a contract with Tischler-Byss to complete the development impact fee study, as well as the infrastructure improvement plan on September 18, 2017. Carson Byss has 28 years of fiscal and economic planning experience, and has conducted the fiscal and infrastructure finance evaluations in 36 states. Tonight, we have a work session to review the town's draft plan, and Carson is present to give that presentation.
Thank you, Lisa. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Carson Byss. I'm president of Tischler-Byss. It's nice to be standing in front of you again. If you remember, a little over a year ago, I was here for the night the contract was approved, and this marks the end of the formal study process, and the beginning, as Lisa put it, the adoption process. A little bit about our firm, if you remember from a year ago, we focus on fiscal and economic and infrastructure financing issues. We've done more impact fees than anybody in the country, and you can see here, this is a list of just the Arizona clients that we've done development fees for under the new legislation that was adopted in 2012. And speaking of the new legislation, as most of you are aware, the landscape for development fees changed significantly in 2012 with the introduction of SB 1525. It firmed up some language in the old act, and put some new burdens on jurisdictions who wanted to do development fees going forward. And the big changes are summarized on this slide. First, although we have to do these types of things as part of an impact fees or a development fee study, the Arizona Act is quite specific about what each component contains. And so, for instance, we now have to publish what we call a land use assumptions document, which is part of the overall document that you have in front of you. Those land use assumptions have to go out at least 10 years, 15 years for utilities, and they also have to be approved by a separate public hearing by the elected body. It also requires what we call an infrastructure improvements plan, also known as an IIP. For nonutility functions, it's limited to 10 years. It does allow you to go 15 years on utilities. However, most of our clients in Arizona have opted to stick with a 10-year time horizon for utilities, given that 15 years is somewhat of a speculative timeframe if you're not doing a build-out type analysis based on your master plan. The Act tightened up some language relative to how development fees are calculated, and this isn't unusual for development fees throughout the country, given case law. But it did specify that you have to base the development fees on the existing level of service that's provided to existing development in the town today. It also put quite a number of significant limitations on what you can collect development fees for. Before that, you could collect fees for just about any local government infrastructure category. As part of SB 1525, they took away the right to do general government facilities unless you had existing debt on the books prior to 2012. It also deleted the ability to do fairgrounds and certain parks. It limited sizes to parks to 30 acres, also limited recreation centers to 3,000 square feet, also put size limitations on libraries, took away the ability to collect fees for training facilities on public safety type uses. And so, it's quite stringent now in terms of what you can and cannot do with the development fee categories. Also, it's stipulated that refunds can be requested if improvements aren't built within specific timeframes. A little bit, sort of the background of impact fees in general before we get started in the individual categories. For those who may be watching at home, the impact fees are one-time payments from new development that are designed to offset their commensurate impacts on capital facilities. They're usually collected at time of building permit. Some jurisdictions choose to collect at time of certificate of occupancy. We can't use the development fees in Arizona for anything related to operations, maintenance, replacement of existing infrastructure. I think it's also important to note that an impact fee is not a tax. It's a fee, and it's very different. A tax is geared toward generating revenue, requires no nexus, no benefit, unlike an impact fee, which basically has to meet the three legs of a legal stool. One is need. We have to show nexus, in other words, the town has been growing, it's going to continue to grow in the future, that growth's going to generate the need for infrastructure. We have to show benefit, and benefit is shown two ways. One, through the timing of the expenditure, and we have to expend the money within 10 years, and also geographic benefit. And for those of you who were around for the last impact fee study, you had different service areas within the community. We have streamlined the number of service areas as part of this impact fee update, and we still meet the benefit test, in our opinion. And then finally, we have to show proportionality. And what we mean by proportionality is that we just can't charge a residential fee and a nonresidential fee. We have to distinguish between the categories because single-family units typically have more people, generate more vehicle trips than multifamily units. And on the nonresidential side, retail typically generates higher trip rates than office and industrial, and office tends to have more employees, and so we need to differentiate the fees to meet that proportionality. In terms of summarizing the growth projections that are in the land use assumption, essentially, we're projecting a population increase of year-round residents, about 330 additional people over the 10 years. There's also a projection of about 1,100 additional seasonal persons. What that means in terms of housing units, it's about 1,750 single-family units and about 250 multifamily units. We recognize that your existing development base today is significantly a single family, but we do anticipate that to change slightly or modestly over the next 10 years. And again, you have to update this in five years, and so if we find out that that trend is either higher or lower than we're projecting, it would be adjusted at that time. And finally, from a nonresidential perspective, we're projecting an increase of about 3,720 new jobs, and that equates to about 1.3 million square feet of additional employment activity or employment square footage. We'll start with parks and recreation. Before we get started, I think it's important that we sort of go over the three ways that we can calculate impact fees. The way to think of it's the past, the present, and the future. So if we look to the past, essentially what we're doing is we're doing a cost recovery or buy-in. The idea here is that we have oversized a facility, whether through foresight or by accident, it doesn't matter, we have excess capacity, and we're going to have new development buy-in to that remaining capacity. We see that a lot with utility fees. For instance, if you have a wastewater treatment plant that's been oversized, you may collect on that remaining capacity. When we look to the present, we call that a consumption-based approach, and essentially it's a snapshot of your current levels of service. For instance, with parks and recreation, we would look at such indicators as number of park acres per person, recreation center square feet per person, what does it cost us to replicate these types of facilities going forward? The idea here is that we are incrementally expanding the system in reaction to growth, okay? The final method is what we call the plan base, where we look to the future, and it's generally based on an adopted master plan. We identify specific projects in detail. We know the funding arrangements. We say we're going to build Park A, B, and C in these years, and the upside is that you may get a higher impact fee. The downside is, is that if development doesn't happen in the way it was projected in the land use assumptions, you still have to build that plan. The general fund has to make up the difference in what you didn't collect in impact fees. So what we've tried to do in this update is steer you into more of a consumption-based approach where possible, because it provides maximum flexibility, okay? We don't have a general fund share, so to speak. If growth is faster than we're projecting, we just build more park acres. If it's lower than we expect, we build less park acres. But we're reducing general fund exposure, but we still meet the letter of the law because we're going to show what the demand is, and then you have the option to build certain facilities. So, starting with parks and recreation, we are going to use that more flexible consumption-based approach. We are recommending a townwide service area, and the components of this impact fee include parks and open space land, as well as park improvements, such as tennis courts, baseball fields, et cetera. Now, what we like to do, and we've purposely kept this at a high level, but if you have specific questions, we're happy to go into this, but what we do is we turn levels of service standards, and I think this is it, yeah. So there are other tables in the report that document levels of service in terms of acres per person, improvements per person, et cetera. What we do is we compare those level of service standards to the projected increase in population and jobs in order to get the growth-related demand. So as you can see here, if the development projections hold true, the Town of Florence would need to build 39 acres of growth-related parkland, or purchase 39 acres, and then build 285 improvements, and that would equal a cost of about $4.2 million. Now, the Town of Florence may decide to build $8 million worth of park land and amenities. The growth-related share is only 4.2. So anything above that, you would have to pay for using general fund dollars. And then that equates to development impact fees for parks of, from a residential perspective, of $2,175 for a single-family unit, $1,616 for a multifamily unit, and these are higher than your current fees, about $758 for a single-family resident and $468 for multifamily. Now, one of the interesting things about the Arizona Impact Fee Act and the home builder's stance on it is that it's very unusual for us to charge parks and library-type fees to nonresidential development. This is an Arizona-specific caveat. And so, we have done a calculation of nonresidential demand on parks and recreation. And as you can see here, the fees are quite modest. They range from about 12 cents a square foot for industrial flex up to 21 cents a square foot for office and industrial, and it's very much in keeping with the town's current fees for nonresidential activity. Any questions before we move on to fire? Okay. With fire, we've done the same thing we did with parks by trying to keep it flexible with a consumption-based approach. Again, we're recommending a townwide service area because of the redundancy with fire service, as one station is on a call, it's being backed up by another station, and the stations that's backing you up can vary by the number of calls that you have going on at any point in time. So it's very rare that we see the need to set up service areas for fire and EMS. We do have a credit for existing debt service, and it's important to note that when we look at development fees, we have to guard against double payment. The reason you'll see a credit sometimes is we have to guard against the fee payer paying once through the fee, and then again through a debt service payment for the same thing that you just paid the impact fee for, okay? And then the components for this fee are station square footage and apparatus, and very much similar to parks, we summarize the level of service standards up here from the fee study, compare that to the projected demand and population and jobs, and see here that we generate a growth-related demand of about 8,600 square feet of fire station space and approximately four pieces of additional apparatus, and the total growth-related cost is $4.3 million. Now, again, much like parks, if the town decided to build two stations totaling 10,000 square feet, well, the first 8,674 is on the backs of new development, the remaining 1,300 square feet is a general fund expenditure. And the proposed development fees for fire and EMS are shown here. It's $968 proposed for a single-family unit compared to $719 for a multifamily unit. That's a slight increase of $51 over your current fee for single-family, and a slight decrease of $24 for multifamily. The nonresidential fees range anywhere from 89 cents a square foot for office institutional all the way up to 49 cents a square foot for industrial flex, and these are slight increases over your current fees. Moving on to police. Again, we wanted to keep it flexible, consumption-based approach here, a townwide service area. Components for police are space and vehicles. Again, we show level of service standards up here compared to the projection of population. And with police, we're using vehicle trip-ins rather than jobs. And the reason we do that is because if we based the police fees on jobs, office would pay the highest impact fee, and we all know that retail activity generates substantially more calls for service due to the presence of people. And so, using vehicle trip generation rates models that as a proxy, and so that's why we use that. And we generate the growth-related need of about 5,000 square feet of additional police space and other 15 vehicles, and the total cost of that is almost $2.2 million in growth-related The proposed fee, again, they go up slightly, $754 a house for single-family compared to $560 for a multifamily unit. It's an increase of $147 and $68 respectively. And then, on the nonresidential, we see a substantially higher fee than office and industrial for retail, and that's $1.46 per thousand square feet versus 57 versus 29 cents. And again, these are increases over your current. Now, moving on to utilities. Most utility fees are calculated using a plan-based approach, and that's what we've done here. And the fees would only be applicable within the Florence Utility Service Area, meaning the area of town serviced by Florence Utility Services, not Johnson Utilities, et cetera. The components are transmission, storage, and supply, and the map here shows the town service area, and I guess that's purple. Now, here is the water IIP. Working our way down, we have transmission lines, and we've got storage tanks, and then we've got future wells. We compare that to, for transmission, the 10-year increase in demand per day, and then down here, we compare the storage tank and the wells to the gallons of capacity per day that they generate to get our cost per gallon of capacity. And then the proposed development fees are done by meter size, and so the fees range from $1,065 for your smallest meter all the way up to $282,000 for your 12-inch meter, and in all cases, this is a decrease over your current water impact fees. Then moving on to wastewater. Same as water, it's actually a plan-based approach, that's a typo on my fault, oops. We have the townwide service area, again, just the Florence Utility Area. We do have a credit for debt service. We've got components of transmission, and then wastewater treatment. The 10-year increase in gallons, the peak capacity offered by the transmission is 911,000 gallons, and then the wastewater treatment expansions total about 1.5 billion gallons per day, and that's how we get our cost per gallon of capacity. And then this shows our proposed development fees, again, by meter size, and they range from $2,400 a meter all the way up to over $636,000 for the 12-inch meter. And it's interesting with sewer, some of them are slight increases, some of them are decreases, and then as you get to the higher meters, those are decreases, or excuse me, increases as well, and those are basically due to changes in the capacity ratios published by AWWA. And then finally, transportation. We have a hybrids consumption-based slash plan-based approach, which I'll explain here in a second. We are recommending a townwide service area, and the component is arterial road capacity. And what we tried to do with roads is allow flexibility. So we created an aggregate demand model that was very similar to what was done in your last study, where we look at your current road network, look at expected travel based on its actual capacity versus actual travel, to get an element of excess capacity, if you will. We plug that into the model, and we project the need for new lane miles. And so, let's just say the model says that in order to maintain current levels of service, you need to build 10 lane miles. Well, here's the list of projects you would choose from in order to build the 10 lane miles. And so, you can see here, the CIP or IIP totals over 100 lane miles. And so, again, that's what we're calling a hybrid, is we're using this as your potential plan, but we're using a consumption-based approach to get the demand, if you will. And so, this table serves two purposes. One, to show the potential projects, as I mentioned, but also to derive our weighted average cost per lane mile. So we're looking at the weighted cost of all these different lane miles, the total cost divided by lane miles to get our weighted average cost per lane for the impact fee calculation. And so, you see here, the average trip length would be 3.82, and then we look at the 10-year growth cost funded by fees is about $6.7 million. Here's our increase in VMT that's projected. VMT stands for vehicle miles of travel on your network, and so here's our cost per vehicle mile of travel. Then we get fees of $2,250 for a single-family unit, which is a slight increase of $164 over your current fee, and then the multifamily unit is $1,560 for a fee of 1560, which is an increase of about $247. And then the commercial fee is increasing by 76 cents, and the office and industrial flex are decreasing slightly. Oops. And finally, so this shows the proposed fees for all four categories, excuse me, all five categories. We've got four nonutility and then the two utilities. So when we look at sort of, I'll just call them the general fund categories of police, fire, parks, and roads, the total fee is $61.33 compared to $5,027, so that increases about $1,106. The multifamily increases from $36.96 today to $44.46 today, or in the proposed fees, so it increases 750. We're also seeing increases in the nonresidential categories, about $802 for commercial, $1,275 for industrial, and $124 for offices. And then, as we mentioned earlier, utilities, water, all the fees are going down, and with wastewater, it's a mixed bag. The smaller meter sizes are going up slightly, the middle ones are going down, and then they go up again as you get to the 8-inch meters and above. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I know this is a lot to digest in a short time, and we may even want to have another discussion about it at some point. So I'm happy to answer any questions, Chad.
Councilmember Wall.
I just have an abbreviation question.
Sure.
What does HH mean?
Household.
Okay. And what does N and S stand for?
Nonresidential square feet.
Okay. Thank you.
For public clarification, I know one of the questions from that presentation that was there is, the current fees that are out there, they want to know how they're currently being collected.
What do you mean, in terms of at time of building permit or CO?
Yes.
Currently, we collect development impact fees at permit. The only differences in that is we've done two separate development agreements where we collected 50% at permit and the last 50% prior to CFO, but those were specifically through development agreement. But the way that our current law is set up, it's collected at building permit.
Another question that I've heard out in the public regarding development impact fees is the different fees in a different area, and if council's going to be looking at how those fees are assessed, because there's some areas that they'd like to see more growth, but because of the development impact fees, it's hindering that from their perspective.
The best way to look at that in The best way to look at that in terms of what was provided tonight is, it's a project-based approach, so what you'll see is projects that are located in other parts of the town than our current fee schedule is not set up to collect. So, there specifically is square footage for a fire station to the north. There specifically is square footage for a police station to the north. There specifically money for parks on the north side of the river, and far less on the south side. For the road projects, they're located all over the town limits. Similarly, on the water and wastewater side, there's very few projects in water and wastewater because of the overall cost and what that would do to the fee, and it's a balancing act to collect, to be able to make the improvements that are necessary for growth, but not, and still maintain competitive with surrounding entities for development. So, there's only a few projects in water and wastewater. You probably remember from the water presentation, there is a connection of a line to the north. Mayor, that's your project that you and I have talked about before. There's water storage, there's a well, those are all on the north side of the river to be able to serve that area where Southwest Value Partners currently owns all that land. Does that help?
Yes. Are there any other questions from council? Councilmember Anderson?
I have a question on the roads. That impact fee would only be charged to the developers that are building adjacent to those highways?
No, sir. Every new residential permit would be charged those fees in the town of Florence to pay for the regional improvements. The way that Carson was trying to explain that is, we essentially have $110 million worth of projects that are needed. We will collect those funds and through council, expend those funds on the projects where we have the most need for capacity, where we have the lowest level of service. So, the projects aren't designated at this time. We've essentially created a bushel basket of potential needs, and council will tell us which needs to expend those funds on based on the most need, whether that's south of the river, north of the river, near Anthem, near Judd Road. Those decisions will be made at a later date once funds are collected.
Right. Thank you.
If I could add something to what Brent just mentioned about the roads. I mean, what we're trying to do with the road methodology is twofold. One, allow you some flexibility, but also let you respond to the market, because even 10 years is a long time, right? And, you know, you could have one or two or more game-changing economic development catalytic projects in the next five years that may influence where development goes. And so, rather than lock you into a very specific IIP, we want to give you some flexibility. The second part of that is, it also lets you respond to changing funding arrangements. So, if all of a sudden, you get some, you know, a windfall of money from the state or the feds for a particular road that's on your IIP, well, now you've got a conundrum there, right? And so, if you've got this master list, well, that one just comes off, and you've still got a big bushel, as Brent put it, to choose from, right? So, it allows a lot of flexibility in our mind.
All right. It doesn't look like there's any further questions. The next public hearing will be on Monday, December 3, 2018, at 6:00 PM at the Town Council Chambers, if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Look forward to continuing the conversation.
Our next item is Item 9A. This is a presentation of letters of appreciation and challenge coins from the Fire Department to Mr. and Mrs. Cruethop. Did I say that correctly? Thank you.
Mayor, would you please join us for the presentations?
Yes.
While the mayor's making her way down to the podium, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, on September 19th, Florence Fire Department and other emergency agencies responded to a major accident on Highway 79. There were a total of 11 patients. Unfortunately, six perished at the scene. We flew another five out of those five, two more ended up passing away as well. So, this is considered a mass casualty if it's over 10 patients, and that night, we had, if you guys want to come on up, I had John and Fabiola Cruethop. John works for the DEA. They identified, he identified himself as a DEA agent, and he and his wife asked if they could help. John is also an emergency medical technician, and he was, we needed the help. We were in a very remote area and with a lot of patients, and we were very grateful that they showed up. John was assigned to the treatment area and was able to help with the triage treatment and transport part of the process. Fabiola was a translator for us, and again, very much needed in this circumstance. She not only helped us gather the medical information we needed, but she also comforted the patients while they were awaiting transport. So, we wanted to recognize them for that, and I've got two things for them tonight. I've got a letter of appreciation, and I've got a challenge coin for each of them, and I'll explain what that means here in a minute, but I'd like the mayor to speak. But also, Mike Harrison worked very closely, an engineer with Florence Fire. So, I'd like both of them to speak before we make the presentations of the letters and the challenge coins.
Mike first? Okay.
Thank you, Chief. To both of you, I'd like to say thank you so very much. The nature of this call and the damage and everything that happened and the severity, we really did need your help. I don't speak Spanish. I speak very, very little, and thank goodness, your wife could translate for us. It definitely helped getting the information that we needed. She did a fabulous job, and she went above and beyond what I would expect most citizens stopping to help. It was absolutely great, and she, over and over again, kept telling the different patients in Spanish, and I didn't know that, you know, it's going to be okay, you're going to be okay, they're going to take care of you. That was fantastic, something that I could not have done, and my gratitude is just immense. Thank you so very much.
Oops.
I just want to express our thanks on behalf of the town. I believe that God puts people in the right place at the right time. I'm thankful that you were there, as well as our first responders to respond to this incident. So, my sincere thank you on behalf of mayor and council.
So, I have a letter for each of you that really, I don't really need to read them because I've kind of recapped what transpired there, but the letter outlines our appreciation for your help that night. And then, there's a tradition, it started in the military, but the police and fire have picked it up as well. It's called a challenge coin, and it's really reserved for people that go above and beyond or do something extraordinary, and it's really our honor tonight to present you both with a challenge coin from the Florence Fire Department, and the correct way to do that is through a handshake, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Would you like to say anything?
You know, the only thing I'll say is, when we showed up, there were some EMTs and police officers on scene. They were doing an amazing job already. I just offered to help, and I was told right away, yeah, we need some help. So, I got to work, and then, when I realized the nature of the patients and, you know, the language barrier, I ran back to my vehicle and got Fobby. And, you know, she's not used to being in situations like this, so she ran up and without any hesitation, just jumped right in there. So, I think she did probably 10 times more than I did that night. But the professionalism that I saw that night from the fire, the police officers, the EMTs, and the flight, the Flight for Life individuals was just amazing. It was an honor for us to be out there. I just wish we could have done more. Thank you.
Can you mention your team here that's here?
Absolutely. I have a great team. This is TJ Gomez, Fernando Guerrero, Julio Chicas, and Stephen Snyder. It's a great team. We work down in the Tucson area, and as you might imagine, we're pretty busy, so thanks a lot, guys, for coming up. We really appreciate it.
All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is approval of the purchase of three police interceptors from Santanford for a total not to exceed amount $96,706.14. Item B is acceptance of the 2018 Homeland Security Grant Program Subreceipt Agreement 180303-01 from Arizona Department of Homeland Security in the amount of $36,798 for Florence Public Safety Interoperable Communications Project. Item C is the authorization to contract with Centimarc for replacement and repairs of the police department and fitness center roofs using the Mohave Contract Number 13XCTMK-0147 in an amount not to exceed $51,393.70 plus a 15% contingency for a total not to exceed amount of $59,102.76. Item D is authorization for the town manager to execute a cooperative purchasing agreement with the city of Tucson. Item E is authorization to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Pinell County to provide commercial driver's license training services. Item F is notice to change task order issued on April 23, 2018 to West Land Resources for task assignment to perform an environmental assessment on two parcels the town is proposing to acquire from the BLM for the expansion of the post-imbute preserve. This is for information only. Responses to the request for proposal were received on March 7, 2018 for an environmental assessment for the post-imbute expansion project and was awarded to West Land Resources. Council entered into an extension on the on-call engineer contract on October 3, 2018. Item G is the approval of the September 4 work session, September 4, 7, 17, and 24th Town Council meeting minutes. Item H is to receive and file the following board and commission minutes. First, May 10, 2018, the Arts and Culture Commission minutes. Next is August 16, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, that is your consent agenda at this time. Is there any member of the council or public that would like any item removed? Okay. With that, I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and H.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. And the motion carries. Item 11 is new business. I is Resolution Number 1682-18. This is going to be the discussion, approval, and disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona, approving the map of dedication for Sun City Boulevard Phase II, Mr. Larry Harmer.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This item is to extend the Sun City Boulevard through the Anthem project. I'm going to zero you in on the various maps to kind of orient people, but generally, this sits in Section 18, north of a lot of where the current development is going on. The actual extension, I lost my cursor, there it is, begins at the terminus of the existing Sun City Boulevard, extends northward approximately 4,100 linear feet. It's going to be providing access to future development units 60, 66, and 70. This is a little bit more detailed than in your packet, and on the packet that was presented online, shows the various sections that are shown within the engineering drawings. One area in particular where I have the cursor in this location actually sits on a old dedicated right-of-way from Maricopa, or Maricopa, from Pinell County that I wanted to highlight in that it's being abandoned as part of the overall dedication. So, that's being abandoned from the Pinell County right-of-way and being added to the town's right-of-way. That's why you see an easement abandonment area in the statistics that are shown. The overall gross area, net area, the same, a little bit over 5.6 acres total for this extension, and generally, that covers it. We have representatives here of the Pulte and the town engineer for any technical questions, and I'm not sure, Mr. Billingsley, if you had anything to add.
Are there questions from council regarding the maps? Would any representatives of Pulte like to come up and speak regarding the maps? Is there anything else you'd like to add?
They appear to be cowering in the back, so I think no.
I like to extend the invitation. All right. With that, if there's no questions or comments, we do need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1682-18, a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona, approving the map of dedication for Sun City Boulevard Phase II.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and multiple seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, gentlemen. Item B is approval, I'm sorry, discussion, approval, disapproval of awarding a contract to Regional Pavement Maintenance of Arizona Incorporated to mill and replace asphalt for CIP T60 East First Street Improvement Project in an amount not to exceed $755,544.80 under job order contract JOC 2014-007 for the city of Buckeye. Chris Salas.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. This project was previously awarded probably approximately about a year ago. The project has not changed. It has just taken some time to procure a new contractor. The town has been working on getting quotes through the job order contracting with, under state law. We have previously awarded multiple contracts to regional pavement with the same contract. They've done a great job, and compared to previous, this is about $15,000 to $20,000 less than our competitive bid that we did previously. So, this is actually saving us some money using a job order contracting versus using the competitive bid process that we did. And assuming that construction prices have only gone up, we actually think that this is probably more along the lines of a $40,000 or $50,000 cost savings to the residents of the town of Florence. Once again, no technical changes have been made of this project. This is just along First Street from essentially Main Street to SR 79. Are there any questions?
I do have a question. I noticed that the JOC contract expires on 3/13/2019. Do we have a timeline for when this project will be completed?
The expiration of that contract doesn't preclude us. All we have to do is have a contract in place before that expiration date, and then, we can use that until the end.
Okay. Do we have a timeline for when this project will take place?
The start date is just after the actual calendar year changes over, so sometime in early January, and I think it's approximately three to four months in length.
All right. I appreciate that. Are there any other council members that have questions?
I have a question.
Councilmember Anderson?
You talk about the water line replacement is critical. Are we replacing the water line? Your background discussion?
The water line was critical and has been replaced with town resources already. So, it was part of the project. This was a multi-faced project. Part of it, we did in-house, and then, part of it, we did with the contractor. We don't have the ability to pave a road, but we do have the ability to install water lines. So, it was critical and has been completed.
Good deal.
Okay. Mr. Billingsley?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Anderson, that water line was actually replaced before Chris and I got here and was under that existing pavement. That's why there's so many pavement cuts out there. We just had not replaced the taps from the old smaller line to the individual properties. So, our team, about a year and a half- So our team about a year and a half ago started that project. It took them about six months, and they did it in between other jobs, and that's why you'll see all those cuts along 10th Street as they actually went and tapped the new line and provided new taps to all those residential customers, and the old line's been abandoned.
All right. With that, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to enter into a contract to Regional Pavement Maintenance of Arizona Incorporated to mill and replace asphalt for CIP T-60 East First Street Improvement Project in a not-to-exceed amount of $755,544.80 under job order contract JOC 2014-007 for the city of Buckeye.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item C, discussion approval and disapproval of awarding a contract to Apache Underground and Excavating LLC to do work associated with the Community Development Block Grant Water Line Replacement Project in an amount not to exceed $632,625.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. This is a longtime project for the Town of Florence to do the downtown, what is referred to in our previous studies and our previous CIPs, the downtown 12-inch water line project. This will be Phase II of that project. Within Phase II, there is a CDBG portion as well as a town-funded portion of that project. This was bid as one project, again, to say the residents, provide cost savings for the residents, and so this is all of Phase II. This is a portion of it that will allow us to get to a logical point within the ADOT right, well, just outside of the ADOT right-of-way. Once again, this is a project that will take us from Well 5, which is where the public works yard, Well 3B4, where the public works yard is on Ruggles, all the way down to essentially Butte at San Carlos.
Okay, thank you. Are there any council members that have questions regarding the project? With that, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the awarding of a contract to Apache Underground and Excavating LLC to do work associated with the Community Development Block Grant Water Line Replacement Project in the amount not to exceed $632,625.
Second?
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item D is authorization directing the town's attorneys to pursue instructions given in executive session relating to U.S. District Court for the District of Arizona, case number CV-14-01304-PHX-DMF Hunter Von Robinson Von Zombie versus Town of Florence et al. Mr. Clifford Matisse.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. This is, this item is a motion before you to authorize the instructions so given to your attorneys in executive session.
With that, we need a motion.
We'll make a motion to authorize directing the town's attorneys to pursue the instructions given in executive session relating to U.S. District Court for the District of Arizona, case number CV-14-01304-PHX-DMF Hunter Von Robinson Von Zombie versus Town of Florence et al.
Second?
Ms. Garcia, do we need a roll call on that?
We do not. Now that the new law has changed, we take a roll call motion on every vote, so that's why we listed in our how many people voted yes, how many people voted no.
Okay, I didn't know if specifically you needed us to separate our voices.
Yes, no.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, this is a special meeting with the Historic District Advisory Commission to review and take action on items pertaining to Cocapelli Moon Saloon, property located at 255 North Main Street, Florence, Arizona. Ms. Lisa Garcia?
Mayor, we're running a little ahead of schedule. We can either take a break and allow us to set up, or we could go in and go forward with the call to the public since the mayor or the manager does not have a report tonight, whatever you prefer. We did advertise that this agenda item would be immediately following the regular town council meeting, new business, and on the Historic District Advisory Commission, we did put approximately 7 o'clock, but in the wording, we said immediately following the council meeting. So we can start a little bit early. I just feel 30 minutes early is a little bit too early.
Okay, let's proceed with item 13, which is the manager's report.
He doesn't have.
Okay, you have nothing? This is our second call to the public. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak at this time? There'll also be an opportunity during the work session, too. Okay, closing that call to the public. Call to the council for current events only. Vice Mayor Woolridge, I'm actually going to start with you because I forgot you last time, and I apologize for that.
Not a problem. I actually didn't have anything to say last time, so no offense taken. I would just like to address the people or the person who felt that it was their right to install Confederate flags on town property. I've received a lot of calls with people that were offended by those actions, and everybody has a right to feel like they feel and to think like they think, but you do not have a right to put those thoughts or feelings on public property. If you want to do that at your private property, that's fine, but I was also totally offended, and of course, I'm emotional, because our country is in such a state right now that we don't want that to be in our town, and we need to think about the things that we do and how it can affect people and situations. And let's be considerate of others. It's okay for us to disagree, but we don't have to be mean and ugly to one another. So I just wanted whoever, to tell whoever did that 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 was not the right choice to make, that you don't have a right to express your feelings on public property like that. You need to keep it private.
Thank you. Councilmember Hawkins?
I have nothing at this time.
Councilmember Anderson?
First, I want to applaud Councilmember Woolridge on her statement. I totally agree with her. But I also want to thank the fire department for their open house that they had Saturday, even though the rain sort of put a damper on it. While I was there, there was a pretty good showing, and it was a lot of fun. The kids seemed to be enjoying themselves, so thank you, chief, and thank the firemen for doing that for us.
Thank you. Councilmember Wall?
I would like to thank all of the members of the public who came to our work session on the budget for next year, and I'd also like to encourage anyone who wasn't able to attend that to give your input and ideas to any member of the council at any time within the next few months. We'll be working on the budget, and we'd love to hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Larson?
I just want to echo the same sentiments that Woolridge said as well. As John, I was at the fire house for their open house as well, and my kids loved it. They thought that was amazing. I'd also had requests, had had requests from the public that we do it every year or every other year. They loved it so much, they were unable to attend this last year, so they were hoping that they would do it again. So I know that it was a big hit with the families that had younger children as well. Also, wanted to, we had thanked the people for coming out to the budget session, and we really do appreciate when they get involved. Anybody who has anything that they'd like to add or contribute to anything that we're doing or any of their plans for the future, we'd love to hear that. So I want to echo current sentiments as well. I know I've hounded people about Make a Difference Day, and I just want to bring it up one more time. It's on 27th, and we have put out the big blue bins at Safeway, accepting donations for the birthday bags as well as the hygiene kits. There's a shopping list right there. If anybody would like to make donations into those bins, it's very simple and easy. That way, we can make the kids on Make a Difference Day. If you'd like to volunteer, there's opportunities for every age and every ability. Once again, that's on October 27th from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., as I have written down. So, yeah, if everybody could come out, we would love to see you and help build a better community. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. So everybody has pretty much said everything that I was going to share. In addition to, I want to say thank you to everybody in attendance this evening. We're looking forward to the work session. Mr. Larry Johnson from the chamber, thank you for attending as well this evening. We have our Main Street Halloween event coming up. Hope to see everybody out. I think our goal is 100 pounds of candy that we're trying to collect. Last I checked, we were up to approximately 10 to 20 pounds? I was looking at the meter. So if anybody would like to donate any candy, Ally Fleas Parks and Rec, please see her, and it's going to be an amazing evening. Our Florence Teen Council is putting on a haunted house at the, oh, goodness gracious, at the VFW.
American Legion?
Yes, thank you. I'm so sorry. My head is going in a million directions this evening. And with that, that's all I have this evening, so...
Point of clarification, where is the gathering place where they make a difference day?
At the Recreation Center, right over in the library.
At the community, okay.
Yes.
That's all I wanted to hear, so people would know where to meet on the 27th at 7:00 a.m.
I love it. Love it that you did that. There's so much going on, book collections, there is clothing collections for goodwill, so we'll see you there. We are not going to adjourn yet because we are going to back up to item number 12, the work session, and at this time, we are at 6:41 p.m. Are we missing anybody who is participating?
Let's take a break, and we'll get them seated.
Okay, we'll take a five minute.
All right, thank you.
All right, we are ready to proceed with item number 12, which is a special meeting with the Historic District Advisory Commission to review and take action on items pertaining to the Cocapelli Moon Saloon property located at 255 North Main Street, Florence, Arizona. Ms. Lisa Garcia?
First, we need to call the Historic District Advisory Commission to order Chair Wheeler, Commissioner Adam, Commissioner Reed, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Novady, Commissioner Knight. We do have a quorum. Our first, I'm going to give a presentation on the hazard abatement issue located at 255 North Main Street. That's parcel number 24917A, and the owner of the property is listed as Florence Ironhorse Rodeo Custosia LLC. A little bit of background on the property. It's currently former business was called Cocapelli Moon Saloon, formerly known as La Cantina Florence Bar, La Paloma, my uncle's place, Cowboy Cradle, as well as my office. The style is a 20th commercial transformed into a contemporary territorial, and it's listed as a contributor. A little bit of history on the building. The small building that was used as apartment that faces Bailey was constructed in 1888, and it had modifications in 1941. Both structures that are facing Main Street are listed as being completed in 1912 to 1914 on the property inventory sheets. The patio area that was, the covered patio area, that was done without permits with the Town of Florence, so we can't say exactly when that portion was completed, but we do note that the assessor's office listed as 2010 for those improvements. So as everyone is aware of, there were two fires at this location. One fire was on June 8, the other on June 26. Since the June 26, well, since the June 8, the Town of Florence started to send letters of compliance, letting the property owner what they know what they needed to do to be able to reopen that property. After the June 26 fire, the Town of Florence did send two additional compliance notices on June 29, as well as July 27. The July 27 notice gave 60 days' notice for the property owner to abate the issue. The Town of Florence did note that we received a return receipt copy on August 6, so we started counting those 60 days on August 6, and since that time, 60 days has passed. The notice of non-compliance and the notice of non-compliance stating that the 60 days has passed, as well as the council packet, were hand-delivered to the property, the statutory agent, on October 11, 2018. We were hopeful that the statutory agent would come and be present with us tonight because there has not been much communications going back and forth, a lot of letters going out, not a lot of discussion, letting staff know what the intentions of the property owner is on the property. So this is simply the building location, and you can see it's a, it's very small on this, but you can see it's a Main Street and Bailey. This is the image of the building prior to the fire, and then you can see basically that there's not much left behind, the front portion of the building, and the Town of Florence is using Section 110.1, which is structural damage by a fire, dilapidation that's causing a dangerous and unsafe condition, unfit for human habitation and/or abitation and/or occupancy, thus requiring demolition or removal of debris from the property. This is a picture that was taken showing the inside of the building, and here's another one showing the brick. Town of Florence believes that it is an unsafe condition and that the structures are damaged and are either partially or completely collapsed. There is a structural report that was included in your council packets, and that structural report has been provided to the statutory agent. Here's another picture of just the inside of the building, so you can really get a look at what's happening. This is a sketch that was provided by Larry Harmer, and it does show what's happening in different parts of the buildings. The main restaurant portion of the building, the roof has been completely destroyed, the cover patio roof has been destroyed, as well as the storage area and the general use structure. So council action required, or action required, demolishing, demolishing and remediating, removing and disposing of all structures of the property, including litter and equipment, demolishing the rear cover patio located to the east of the main restaurant area, demolishing the existing storage structure, including the roof, walls, basements, and removal of all hazardous substances on the property. This is not a typical situation that's occurring in the Town of Florence. It is an abatement issue. The town is not the property owner. The town is abating a life and safety issue. So typically, what would happen is a property owner would come to the Historic District Advisory Commission, and they would apply for a permit to be able to demolish a building. The commission would have 30 days to be able to look at that, and they would have the right to go out and ask that property owner to consider, 180 days to ask that property owner to consider selling that property. This is a different situation because the Town of Florence does not own the property. The Town of Florence has provided notices to the property owner, and the property owner has not been responsive to the Town of Florence so far. What we do know is that there is no insurance on the building, and so the Town of Florence has to do something and be sure that that structure is removed at some point. And after several discussions, including staff, we felt it was appropriate because the 60 days had lapsed without hearing back from the property owner, what their intention was, is to make the steps necessary to be sure that in the event that the Town of Florence must act, that we have the proper authority to do so. that the Town of Florence must act, that we have the proper authority to do so. And so what's next, basically? The Town of Florence, depending on what happens at the actions tonight by council, the property owner will be served with a notice of abatement of a public nuisance, and they will actually have 30 days to be able to complete that act. At the end of that 30 days, the town, if the property owner does not act, the town will go into a municipal court setting, and we will file a, we will file an order to be able to go forward with an abatement action. And then once again, if the property owner fails to act, then the Town of Florence would go out and abate by cleaning up the site. And at that point, that the Town of Florence cleans up the site, we would go in and we would apply for basically a lien to place all expenses that were spent by the Town of Florence on the property. And it would be a lien on that property. The timeline to do this, so from the date that that 30 days' notice is given to the time when the property is going to be cleaned up, it is 60 to 120 days, because every property owner does have the right to appeal, and there would be appeal process if the property owner requested it. So looking at that, we didn't want anybody here to think that if we went through all these motions, that within 30 days, the property would be cleaned up. That is just not something that can happen. It does have a life of its own for how long the process will take. And so I'm up here tonight, and I am helping us get through the presentation, really go over it. And I will be handling, steering your questions to the proper town person that is responsible for that area. And so as you can see by our question, the building's codes, we will be deferring to James Allen. Financial compliance, we will be deferring to Joe Jarvis. Fire safety is Dave Strayer. Historic preservation will be Larry Harmer. Legal is Cliff Mathias. And any questions about the structural report will be Chris Solis. So I would like to start with questions. Mayor, would you like to start with the Historic District Advisory Commission?
I would. I would like to turn it over to your board at this time to begin with some of your questions.
I wonder if you could just go back to the chart in the beginning about the required action the town wanted to take? That, I think it was that, was, yes. So I, reading that the town is suggesting we demolish and remediate all structures on the property, including the general use structure, which it's saying is possibly sound. So I'm reading that right. Every structure you're recommending to demolish.
We can have, if you'd like, we can have Chris go over the, where Chris is? There he is. We can go have Chris go over the structural report, or we can have Larry speak to that. But at this time, the Town of Florence is not the property owner. So the one thing that we want to say is that anything that's going to be demolished is underneath an abatement action. So going in and preserving a site, we're not the property owner. So it's different. So if the Town of Florence, and we can talk about possible costs, because what the Town of Florence would have to do is go in and pay for the property to be shored, and then to be able to go in and pay for the removal. And then we would have to actually go in and pay for those areas to be made to where they were stable. And this is not a Town of Florence property, and the Town of Florence would not be able to go in and say that we had an emergency in order to take those actions. I would defer to Cliff Mathias, our town attorney. Did you hear the question, Cliff?
Initial question?
I will help and let Cliff fill in. If the question is, can the town spend money to shore up these buildings or preserve them, we cannot. That would be against the law. We can demolish as an abatement for life, safety, and public welfare, but we can't stabilize somebody's private property.
I do have two clarifying questions. One would be more for Larry Harmer, but the second part would probably fall under your realm. The one for Larry, would we be able to go in and preserve some of those bricks that are in that building because they do have historic value to the Town of Florence in regards to our history?
Mayor, council, as part of a demolition contract, should we be granted permission by magistrate to do so? You can be specific as far as salvage is concerned. However, if you build in salvage, that the town would have a place to store and, you know, try to preserve some of those, either adobe or the fired brick, it's going to increase the cost of the demolition for two reasons. One is the time. It's very time, you know, extensive to actually do the salvage brick at a time and the adobe brick at a time. And also, demolition contractors usually count on some of the salvage rights for themselves to help defer the cost that they would normally charge us. So it would have to be, you know, a choice, a policy choice on the part of the council on which way you would rather go, the most, you know, expeditious, cost-effective, or if you wanted to salvage, to direct us, you know, accordingly.
Okay. And the second part of my question is, I understand that it's not one owner, but this is an LLC ownership. Is that correct?
It's an LLC, but when you go in and look at membership for the LLC, there are no members included in the LLC. The only thing it does list is a statutory agent of the LLC, and all notices have gone to the statutory agent of the LLC.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
I'm sorry, Mayor, Vice Mayor, just one point of clarification. The LLC does have a member, but the same person is also the statutory agent. So notices that the town has been sending and the notice of intent that it plans to send out very shortly, if given the approval to do so, are directed to the LLC and the member and the statutory agent at multiple addresses. And the intent will also be to post the building with the notice. The owner of the property then does have the ability to challenge that notice and also challenge the assessment. So part of the question on preserving the bricks, as staff, we have to assess or estimate what the cost will be, and we have to do that at the very beginning. So we'll, you know, we have to estimate somewhat, you know, within a certain spectrum. And then that amount will become potentially the lien. It does get trued up at the end, but it's hard to predict the exact cost when we start out.
Thank you for that. Go ahead, Councilmember Larson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a quick question about the legality of preserving the bricks. Is there any liability on us if we do keep the bricks and then use it in future projects because we are somehow benefiting from it? Would there be any legal liability for us doing that?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, I mean, I'm not an expert on the remediation of materials, but my understanding is there potentially is asbestos and other hazardous materials. This was a pretty serious fire that occurred. So I can't tell you definitively, but I would be, I don't know the cleaning process, but I would be apprehensive about saving materials like that from a fire damaged or severely damaged situation with those hazardous materials, because I don't know, I don't know if there is a way to clean all of those materials from the bricks.
Just to clarify, that was, I mean, I appreciate that, but that really wasn't what I was trying to go for. What I was asking about was if we're taking somebody else's property and charging them to keep that property, for us to keep that property, and then we're now turning around and say we use that, those bricks, this is all hypothetical, of course, use those bricks on another property or down the road, now we're using somebody else's property that we've charged them for, is there any legal liability on us for doing so?
There is, that is a good question, because we don't really take, we don't take, by taking an abatement action, even when the court, say the court approves that procedure, we're not taking title to the property. The town, it doesn't take title to the property, just like we don't necessarily take title to the debris. But, you know, there may, there may be some items in there that are salvageable. We may or may not be able, I don't know where they will go, but it is a good point. That's another reason, quite frankly, where we may not want to keep that personal property, because we're not taking ownership of anything. We're taking a police action to clean it up. Then the property is leaned, and then the property owner actually has a certain time period to try and pay that lien off. So as a town, we don't take ownership of anything. So that is a very good question, and probably another reason, you know, to be very cautious of taking possession of any of the items that are part of the building.
Mayor, and Member of council, I'd just like to jump ahead a little bit and explain something within our agenda process. So on item number C, if you go through and if you authorize that action, you'd be authorized in an action not to exceed $300,000. And we're going to talk about this in detail later. But you would be authorized in an action not to exceed $300,000. And so if that is the action that you authorize, the abatement notice that we talked about earlier, that he's going to have, that the person's going to have 30 days to go through, would also state that same, that same dollar amount. And so that would be how the time would start ticking on that 30-day notice. If the town went back and wanted to exceed that dollar amount, then we would have to go back and issue a new notice, and thus, our timeframe would start over. And so, so far, what the Town of Florence has actually got a, an estimate for, I will say, is there is a cost to where if the Town of Florence, if there is not any asbestos in the building, versus an extreme case of asbestos in the building, where it has to be completely tinted, and multiple portions of the building has to be bagged to be able to be removed. So that cost can be anywhere from $65,000 to $300,000. And those are the costs that we're looking before we even add on anything else. Mr. Solis will be going out and getting a Phase 1 report? Is that correct?
Yeah.
A pre-demolition report that will let us know a little bit about what kind of material is inside, and then we'll have a little bit of better understanding of what the total project cost would be. But we would still feel that it would not be at that amount, not to exceed number. If the council was going to go in and harvest bricks or do anything like that, we would have to go back and we'd have to look at the cost and how much that would add to the project. And then maybe someone in this room has more experience than I do to tell us what type of amount that would be, and we'd have to add that to the $300,000.
Can we legally go on the property and do this assessment? Or could we be charged with trespassing?
Yes, absolutely. In the vein of public safety, we have those rights. Those rights were explained in the letters, actually, which part of the property management code. I believe the IPMC, Section 109, gives us the authority to do what is necessary as a municipality to render the building safe. And so part of this was to do this initial structural analysis. And then the next part would be, again, to do the pre-demolition report. Those are things that staff at that time, and I believe staff currently feels are necessary to make the building safe and the situation safe as a whole. So it fits within the realm.
Well, if I understand what the staff is proposing here with this abatement, we're essentially going to demolish the building for $300,000, right? So we'll have an empty lot with a lien of $300,000 against it.
Well, the Town of Florence would not own the property after this, so the only right we would have is to put a lien on the property.
Yeah, it would have a lien on it.
Yes. And then our town attorney has informed me that the property owner would have the right to pay back the lien in a 10-year period. Cliff, can you speak to that?
I believe the Arizona statute allows for a lien, if the estimate or the final assessment is over $10,000, the property owner has 10 years to pay it back. Additionally, the lien is inferior to general tax liens, and it could be inferior, meaning other things have priority, people have prior ownership, if there's, say, a deed, a mortgage on the property. However, we did order a litigation guarantee report from a title company showing that there does not appear to be a mortgage on the property. But even with, even so, our lien would still be inferior to a general tax lien. So the property owner may not, if they're not paying the taxes, at least those taxes would have to be paid before we could recover on our lien. So again, it may not be, the cleanup, the idea is that the cleanup is immediate, but it doesn't necessarily affect the ownership of the property. The idea is the police action is to clean up the hazard.
Well, is there any way that we can force the owner to come and negotiate with us or talk to us about this situation?
We're doing it.
Well, I mean, if there's a, you know, if this goes forward this evening, and he doesn't comply with the notices, the notice that will be sent out, then the next step is to file a complaint with the town magistrate. And of course, he'll have rights there, too. But as, you know, other than notices and, you know, forcing ourselves to abate the property, I don't think there's any way to force the owner to clean it up.
Question, what did the letter say that we sent to him, because they weren't included in the agenda?
He had 60 days to be able to, and then there's a long list of things that they must be able to complete and do. I wanted to let council know that, to remind council that we've given this property owner notices. He was issued three notices. He was served by a police officer to give tonight's council packet. Wanted to make sure that the property owner could be present with us tonight. So we wanted to make sure he received the packet, and he received the packet Thursday about 4 o'clock, which was prior to any of you receiving the packet, to make sure that they could make the time to be present. The next notice that we give, when we're ready and we have our notice together, will provide 30-day notice. Like Cliff said, it'll be sent certified mail. It'll be delivered by a police officer, and the notice will be placed on the building. And we are attempting to abate a situation. Plus, we have a large population that is calling the Town of Florence and asking what the city is going to do about it and what the town is going to be doing about it. We have property owners that own businesses on Main Street. We have houses that are right off Main Street, and people are worried that a dangerous situation is in place. And so rather than taking and going and taking it a step and going to the H-TAC and seeing them independently, and then going back to you and letting you know what the H-TAC said, we thought this would be a great opportunity to get our Historic District Advisory Commission with our council, be able to sit down as a team, and really have a planning session with action, determine what we are going to do. Like I said, this is not a typical situation where a property owner has insurance and then it's immediately fixed. And it's not a situation, even at times when we've dealt with this and the property owners have not had insurance, the property owners have always been engaged and involved and always had a plan of what they were going to do. And they always had a stake in what was going to happen to Main Street in Florence. We are not at this time being engaged by this property owner, and I wish we were. It's just not the case at this time.
Chair Wheeler?
This is a huge frustration because you have the one issue of the situation there now, the concerns of the residents, the concerns of the town, and safety issues. But in the long term, after this process has been concluded, to say everything is cleared and you've got a lien on the property, you have a vacant property in the downtown, and you will probably have a vacant lot in the downtown, just as long as the general store has been there, empty. And it just is extremely frustrating to me, as an individual resident in the Town of Florence, but as a chair here on the commission, that our goal is to see this downtown become vital and grow, and what we're seeing is it just be torn apart. And it's very frustrating.
And I just want to say, staff shares her concerns completely.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Solis would like to speak to your question as to exactly what was in the letters.
Okay. And then I'll let Ms. Reed speak from the board. She was waiting as well.
I just want to clarify, though, according to this report, the, and it's actually the Avanenti Tac House, built in 1889, is, how much of a danger is that? Because it doesn't sound like it is. And that at least leaves an adobe on Bailey Street that is part of our history. And I know it's difficult to separate when it's all one owner, but just echoing Betty's thoughts, it's just a shame to, if there's a chance of saving something, saving it. thoughts, it's just a shame to, if there's a chance of saving something, saving it. Maybe if there's actually something left there and the place is cleaned up, the owner may be inspired to do something with that remaining building. I mean, that's wishful thinking, but...
Madam Mayor, members of council, as it relates to the three letters, as everyone is aware of here, but maybe not of the audience, there was two separate fires. So after the first fire, there was a letter sent, again, about the material, the dangers, and so that letter basically represents between the Building Safety Department and code enforcement, between Curtis Williams and myself, a letter was sent about the infractions that needed to be resolved, using, again, the IPMC, the International Property Management Code. So there was a series of pictures, a series of code violations, and a documentation of it needing to be cleaned up, as well as, I guess, evidence of unpermitted electrical work that was within the building, unpermitted structural work that was within the building. I will use the word, again, observed work versus checking in the system and no permits. So not trying to make accusations, but merely state facts that there were no permits pulled and obvious signs of work at the time. After the second fire, which essentially rendered the building structurally unusable, a second letter was sent out, once again, documenting all the previous infractions to the Property Management Code, as well as a statement to address Councilman Anderson's concerns. A statement was made that we were going to be, again, exercising our right under the International Property Management Code to do an assessment of the building structurally. This was, again, coordinated and we reached out to some other building officials within the state of Arizona about our authority within the Property Management Code, and they agreed of that power, so we used that power. And that letter was sent to the property owner as well. And then, again, the third letter is a documentation of the, of all the structural shortcomings of the building at this point, as well as the attached structural report to the property owner, and giving that owner 60 days to resolve that based on the structural analysis, not the opinion of staff, of the integrity of the building. Again, this is a public safety concern. There is only so much that the town can do to, I mean, the town has already spent $5,000 approximately on the fencing around the building. That does not include, obviously, any staff time of public works, again, moving barricades and all that. That is, those are hard dollars that the, that the Fire Department has coordinated with the fencing company through, again, a joint contract. These are items that the staff has spent, as well as a structural report on determining this, again, all in the name of public safety. So that's, again, documented in that report, as well as the 60 days. At that point, that's where we're kind of at tonight, as far as, but I think that, to use the words, the most important thing here is an interactive process, which as of today, we don't have that interactive process. That's the, that's the point that's missing in any relationship, is here's the issues, here's the report, please tell us how you plan on mitigating that. And not all will always agree on a timeline, but we don't have any responses on that timeline or, in theory, a plan to abate the situation accordingly. So staff has moved through this plan. All of staff, one team has come up with this, this plan at this point.
I know this plan has not been easy, and I know it has taken a lot of our staff time. So I just want to put that out there on the floor. I'm appreciative for our Fire Department for stepping up and being able to secure that building because public safety is important. This agenda item, this special meeting, is so delicate because, on one hand, we do have the historic value that we want to preserve, and on the other hand, we do have the aesthetics and the safety issues of Main Street and how we want to move forward as a community.
But this other building doesn't seem to be a safety issue, according to this report.
Correct. I...
I would like our building official to speak to that, please. Mr. Allen?
Incorrect, might have been premature because I'm not an expert on the area. I'm just going to say Ms. Reed. But Jimmy, thank you for being here this evening to help us.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Ms. Adam, you had a question about the storage room. You asked about their structural integrity. The storage room, I don't believe we have a layout on our presentation. I can show you, here we the front of the building. Their storage room is the front. The trusses inside of that, the roof structure, is compromised, and that's actually part of the structural report. There was a, in part of that area, there was also a fire that happened years prior. You could see when they put a false ceiling in at that time. It covered all of the previous damage. Oh, yeah, there it is, okay. So, is this the point?
Can I just clarify? Can I just clarify what I was referring to? It's in the write-up by Broderick Engineering on the last page of text.
That's correct.
And it's the paragraph just before the disclaimer where it says, "The generally used structural." Structure. So I don't want to...
That'd be this structure here.
Is that what we're talking about, the storeroom?
That's correct. This is the actual, would be considered, the house that everybody's referring to.
Thank you.
There's some, there's some structural items on it, but it, by the structural report, it can remain intact. But, so the, everything around, this was the illegal permitted, illegal non-permitted structure here for the patio. That would have to come down because it relies on this interior wall for support. Again, this wall here is the one that's referred to. Because of the height of the wall, it's not stabilized, there's no structural in it. So the immediate issue on that wall was collapse. The height of the wall is going to be in the parking lot. Go back. We talked about the front wall here on the patio. This wall, if you buy some of the pictures, and I'll go to a picture, if you notice this corner, scroll the picture. Go back. See the corner, this corner right here? There's no connection between this wall and this parapet area. So what that does, that leaves this wall unsecured, that if it falls, there's, it's sitting there. It's going to fall within the street area, so the front. So this part would be the, by the storage area considered. There's also a basement in that area as well, a lot of people don't realize. Well, the structure and the roof, I said prior, was burnt prior. It's been covered up, so that was all, and I don't believe anybody knew there was a fire in there any other time, but it had a false ceiling in it. Also, the structures in there at that point, is there pictures? Nope, the kitchen area. Is that all the pictures of this? That's not going to show up there. So the structure, the trusses have been repaired locally. They put boards underneath it to prop it up. This was how they were operating the business at this time. And of course, nobody had access back in here to notice this stuff. But once, now that we've had access, it was unsafe prior, but now with the fire, the water damage just from the, from actually extinguishing the fire, it's created a very unsafe condition. The other portion that happens with these walls is there is a tie-in between this building and the hair salon next to it. There's an archway. That's all structurally tied together, so that's already starting to crack next to the hair salon. So that would have to be removed as well.
I was speaking...
That's all part of the bid, to actually go in and remove this whole area and actually remove the basement area and then actually fill it back in. Because we don't know what's in the basement, we don't know the structure of the basement. So those are things that, when they do the actual pre-estimate on it, if you would, they'll go and see what's going to have to happen, what the interior is going to be to get it out. You've asked questions about how to structurally, to secure this. The structurally secure, when it's secured, it's going to be an eyesore because there's going to be bracing everywhere to hold this one wall up for indefinite amount of time.
Speaking only for myself, I appreciate the mayor and the council's due diligence trying to save our historic buildings. This is, as Lisa said, a very unique case, and given that the town will never be the property owner, the property owner is being non-cooperative, I do understand the position we're in. And as a citizen, I'm livid that one of our residents would do this to our town, but the way I see it is we have no choice. It is a terrible eyesore, and it is a safety hazard.
It is absolutely.
There's no question about it. So we have, what, another 90 days of this at a minimum we have to live through to follow the process, and that's without, if the owner doesn't contest. This takes us into home tour, and at the end of the day, as the chair said, I see us with a big black hole that will never be sold or built on, and we will pay the $300,000. This is very not right, but I, again, I understand the council's actions, and from my perspective, there's nothing else to be done. We have to clean it up.
Mayor?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Yeah, along that line of, and John's conversation with Cliff, I'm wondering if maybe staff could find out, is there any, because, you know, when these people, they come in, they buy these buildings, and then they do an LLC, which they're covering their backside, so there's no liability on them. It's on the corporation, and they can walk away and just let it go, you know? That's the purpose of LLCs, is so you don't have any liability. Okay. To mitigate that, I'm wondering if there's some way that, from now on, before we give certificates of occupancy or a business license to operate one of these buildings, or if they even own one, if, on Main Street, because a lot of them are connected. And it's not right for people to have these commercial buildings without fire insurance. Fire insurance isn't that expensive. You know, it's like when the General Store burned down. My understanding of it was, it was two doctors owned that, and then they didn't even have fire insurance. And there was, there was a going business in there. The Copecelli could have been a going business, but they had to shut down for various reasons. But I would like staff to see if there's some way that, you know, we could require, like, you know, everybody's required to have a liability on their car in order to drive. Maybe this could help us in the future, so, because if people, if people aren't required to have a fire insurance, then probably eventually we won't have a Main Street. So I'm just wondering if there's some legal way we can require fire insurance. Being there in the city limits, fire insurance isn't all that high. I'm just wondering for a future solution, because we're in a heck of a quandary here. It's just too bad where we're at and how people don't really, a lot of them don't really care about the future of the town. They're just in here for a quick investment or whatever they think. It's a real shame it got to this point, but...
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hawkins, we will look into that and report back at a future meeting.
Yeah, okay. Because if there is any way we can do that, I think maybe that would help us in, you know, in the future, so we're not in this predicament in the future.
I have another question.
I mean, it's a shame. It's terrible.
Are we allowed to ask about what the tax situation, property taxes on this building is?
And once, if the demolition occurs and it's revalued...
Are the property taxes paid, for one thing? And if we do all this, will the $600,000 or $300,000 go against the value of the property? Will that increase the property tax?
The last time I looked, it, there was 4,000, estimate 4,000-plus of tax dollars owed at that site. So that would be property taxes owed at that site.
And what is the process that the town could take to take over any property where the taxes haven't been paid?
Well, anytime, I'll let Cliff speak to this, but anytime that a property goes three or more years without having taxes collected, anyone can go in and pay those taxes, and then the property owner would have a specific period of time to be able to pay it back. And if they did pay it back, you would receive a little bit of interest on your money. Cliff, do you want to, or Joe?
What Lisa provided is exactly correct. It's three years if you don't pay your taxes. Ben just looked it up. The taxes were not paid for last year, so there would be two more years that would accrue before it may, and it's up to the county, be on the block to be able to pay those back taxes and hope to gain title and deed to the property.
Well, based on the cooperation that we've seen, I can't imagine him paying property taxes on this thing.
We could only hope. I have a question as well. So if we decide to demolish the buildings and we have a lien on it, what kind of access to that property does that give the owner or to us to be able to use that property?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I, you know, part, some of that we may have to work out in the order with the judge, assuming the judge gives us an order to go forward on the abatement. I would think at a minimum that we would exclude the property owner while the work is being done, so there's no interference. But as far as when the work is completed, I think the owner would have access to the property.
Is there any we can ask to block that if we have a lien on it? I don't, I just don't think it would be fair for us to clean it up for him, and then he can just do what he wants to with that land? So I think that's something we should look into.
Well...
If we can at all possibly block him from having access to that land to...
Yeah, we...
I mean, I don't know if we can do that legally, but...
We'll keep looking at that, but...
Thank you.
Can't the town condemn that property and then do an eminent domain and take it over so we're not losing $300,000? Because it sounds to me like we're, the town's never going to own that property if the tax people already have.
That's a good point.
You know, if they're already in line, first in line, and we're last in line, what's the point? Just condemn it. You know, at least we get some, we can use it for a parking lot or something, but if we just let, let it go like it's proposed, the gentleman that owns it, or the LLC that owns it, can still put a chain-link fence in front of it. It's still going to look horrible. At least the town could, you know, gravel it over and use it for a parking lot or, or a little, you know, place for people to sit or something. But right now, I can't see the town basically wasting $300,000 and not getting anything in return.
That's a good point, Debbie. Cliff?
Madam Mayor, H-TAC member, the laws have changed in Arizona and in most states to really take the police power away from governments. That's because the police power has been used improperly in the past. And actually, one of the landmark cases for that is called City North and is actually in Arizona. So the only way we could condemn that property and take ownership of it is if we had a public use, and then we would have to fulfill that public use. So if we were going to build a road there, or we're going to build City Hall there, we could do that. But to take that property, condemn it, clean it up, and then try to sell it to a private individual, that would definitely be against the law.
I didn't say sell it to a private individual, but I think it'd be a great place for a police substation, which we used to have a police office downtown Main Street, never had any problems on Main Street, or very few. And now it's, now we have no presence on Main Street, and our Main Street's fallen apart, and we need help.
If I may piggyback on some of those questions, if we were to do the demolition and clean it up and we have the lien on the property, like they had said, that would, wouldn't prohibit the property owners from entering the property or blocking it off with their own fence or doing whatever they so may choose, is there a way legally that we can not take ownership, but that we may use the property because of the fact that we have the lien on it? I'm thinking maybe for festivals or things like that, where we could maybe use it even on a temporary basis. I mean, what's the legality of that?
The Town of Florence has several agreements with various people to be able to use their lots. I think you'll remember the Elections Department burned down, and the county owns that lot, and they did pave it, and the Town of Florence has an agreement to... and, and they did pave it and the Town of Florence has an agreement to where we can use it for festivals and other activities. We also have a parking lot agreement with several people that own private lots in town so that we can go ahead and use it. It is an actual contractual agreement to be able to use and it does state, in some places it states that we will maintain the striping and the ADA striping on one of the lots to be able to use that for town. On another agreement, it's that we're going to pay, we're going to take care of the right-of-way plants and other things, but there's not an exchange of hands, but there is exchange of what the Town of Florence is going to do to maintain that property for use.
I just want to clarify, you keep saying the word agreement and agreement takes two parties and if the party isn't willing to come to the table tonight, I'm not thinking that they're going to be coming to the party to sign the agreement.
In order for the town to use property typically, you have to have a private property owner's permission and that would take an agreement. Cliff, anything you want to add?
Mayor members of the council, Lisa's correct. We, we have a lien, we would have a lien interest, assuming we recorded that lien, but we don't have any possessory interest unless it's voluntarily given to us by the property owner.
Okay.
One more question, so if we, because I'm like Debbie, I hate to give up $300,000 and we not benefit from it. So would a public, like a pocket park and some public bathrooms be considered public use if we did eminent domain and did something like that?
Potentially. I mean, yeah, I mean...
I mean, could we use that $300,000 to do that project rather than...
True, but even, I mean, it's, it's more of a policy discussion, not a legal issue, but I think we would still have to spend the money to clean it up first.
Right, but I don't want the owner to have access to that. If we spend money, then it should be town.
Right, that would be more of a condemnation than, than an abatement cleanup.
Right.
Before we, before we go any further with that discussion, that's not agendized tonight.
Oh, right.
That's a different process and we would need to seek outside legal counsel because eminent domain is highly contested. So we'd probably bring in Bill Sims to assist, but yeah, that's not why we're here tonight is to talk about building a park or eminent domain.
So what I'm going to do is I'm just going to kind of do like a redirection at this time and just kind of go in order so we have some navigation to the meeting. So the first item that I think that we really need to look at is our discussion of, you know, emergency demolition permit, abatement, remediation, removal and disposal of the structure, including the debris regarding that Cocapelli Moon Salon. And I'd like to hear from each member of the board in regards to how you feel about this, this item.
A question, do we not need to take a vote?
We will be taking a vote tonight.
I mean, are commission taking a vote to recommend to the council?
We, we, so underneath the rules, apparently, and Larry, you can help me with this as well, emergency issues would not typically require an HDAC permit, but we do not want to handle it in that way. We want to bring the committee in and make sure that we are one. In the past, there was times when council made action and the committee was not included or the commission was not included and, and that did not sit well for either one of our working relationships. We want to make sure that this is a joint effort and we have asked for your support in this. And if you read the agenda in the way that it is worded and that's, that's what it says, it basically says discussion and possible action on the historic district commission to support an emergency demolition permit and, and that's really what we're asking for.
In that regard, Madam Chairman, I would think it would be more appropriate for the commission to vote as a group as opposed to individual comments. That's just my opinion.
Prior to the vote, though, if anybody would like to say anything, share their thoughts, feelings, have any clarifying question answered by any member of staff, then it provides that opportunity.
I have one more comment if I could.
Okay, and then I do want to hear from the board. Go ahead, Councilmember Hawkins.
Well, like Councilman or Vice Mayor Woolridge brought up, yeah, for us, yeah, we're going to, the $300,000, well, that's the max is my understanding. It hopefully will come in at a lot less than that, but that's the max. We're going to have to spend that. I mean, it's a health and safety issue here. I don't really see us getting around that. So there's $300,000. Then if we put in a park or whatever, we're going to have to figure out, because we're going to have to take this money. My understanding is we're not budgeted for this, so this is going to have to come out of, we're going to have to move back a project here or there to pay just for the demolition. Then if we want to put in a park or, or restrooms or whatever, that's extra money. I mean, we could be up to a million bucks or something before we're finished, so. And it sounds to me like the owner under, under Arizona law will have ten years to pay this lien back before, and then if he didn't, then, then we would get automatically, we would get ownership, right?
And I just want to...
After the ten years.
Well, I, at some point there, if payments are not made, we can file another action to foreclose on the lien.
Right, right, but I mean, but at that point, we could take possession. So we're stuck between a rock and a hard place. I mean, it's, like I said, it's a tragedy, but maybe we can figure out a legal way to require people to have fire insurance, because, like I say, it's not fair to the people that have businesses next to the business that catches on fire, you know, for that person not to have fire insurance. It just, you know, yeah, it's a bad deal. Terrible deal.
Sorry, I apologize for that. And I do know that our staff's going to bring that back at another meeting. So moving back over to the board, is there any members that have any questions, comments, concerns?
So I just have a comment. I think this is inevitable. I think this is a horrible situation. What I worry about is precedent setting. We have many absentee commercial building landowners in this town who don't care about this town and this possibly can become their way out. So I really hope we can figure out some firewall so that the next property owner who wants to have a fire sale can't stick the town like this.
I do want to say one thing, when we file a lien on that property, everybody needs to be understanding too that when, if someone puts that property up for sale and they go out and they do their due diligence, the first thing they see is a huge lien on the property. So it almost prevents the sale. So I don't, I don't want somebody to think that they're going to get off free and that they're going to sell this property and then the Town of Florence is not going to be able to get back any money that is due. It's, it's very unlikely that we would, just being realistic, but it would still have a lien on it that would have a legal requirement of being held on that land.
But I guess my argument is that as we continue to enforce our codes and try and make our property owners come up to code, there's a lot easier way.
Yeah. It's an unfortunate situation for everyone, yeah.
It is, and I just think it's the principle of, you should be a responsible property owner.
Chair Reed?
I agree. I mean, I feel like we have no choice, but I just think, has anybody talked to SHPO? I mean, because that general use building is listed on the National Register. Do they, maybe they have some advice, some, some input as to how, I'm sure this is not the first time a situation like this has occurred.
I've actually reached out to SHPO on this issue, but I have actually not heard back. They have not responded.
Too sticky for them. It is, and I agree with Kathy. I mean, it's a dangerous precedent that we're presenting, but we don't have a lot of choice and it's just a crying shame.
Chair Smith?
Well, I agree with Councilmember Hawkins. I mean, I own a business building on town and I'm paying fire insurance. It never entered my mind not to and I don't understand this, when you think the two doctors did it with no insurance over their big restaurant and then this and he's a lawyer. I mean, what kind of people are they that they would not think, and they know that they're putting the cost on the town and they know it. They have no regrets and no embarrassment about it. And I think like Councilman Hawkins said, I think we need to look into where we encourage people to get fire insurance. I'm just shocked that people don't do it automatically. I wouldn't be able to sleep at night knowing that I didn't have it on the building that we have. And I vote to bring it, to go ahead with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Smith. Chair Schmidt?
Obviously, we have to do something. It's a hazard, but I cannot understand why those businesses don't have insurance. I think it should be required and I hate to waste $300,000, but obviously it has to be done.
Sharon Abatney?
So when they demolish the building, they're going to smooth that lot out so it just doesn't look like a bunch of...
As far as I understand, yes.
And is there any way that we can prevent a fence from going back up in front of it so that people can't use it for parking or...
Since we're not the property owner, I don't believe that we can, but I'll defer to Mr. Billingsley for a moment.
The whole intent with this mitigation project, if we go forward, is to make sure that if we do the cleanup, we do it right and that it's a developable lot. We believe from the staff perspective that the highest and best use of that property is somebody to come in, either the existing property owner or a future property owner to purchase that property and build a new building, a safe building that's up to code on that lot that is a contributor to our Main Street and hopefully to our, our future tax revenue. So that is our intent with our cleanup project, unlike some of the others that have been done. From what I understand, some of the others, it was just dig a hole and pile the building in the hole and then cover it up. No, we want to make sure that this is done right. Number two, there's a planning process that has to be gone through prior to improvements going on that particular property. And so that would, that would go through our planning department and their review regarding the design review, et cetera.
Well, I appreciate that. My opinion, at the point that Historic Main Street is in dire straits and I really doubt that in my lifetime, or maybe even the next fifty years, that that lot will ever be worth $300,000.
Thank you. Chair Knight?
For me, this is personal. I used to live in that general use building. I remember that layout. It's hard for me to be professional about this because my grandmother tended bar in there. Everybody knew. We grew up, my age, grew up in that bar, good or bad, but the social aspect of what's going to be missed from that place is a lot. It's huge. Everybody I talked to knows what is going to be missed from that and it is so disappointing it comes to this, it's so disappointing that this owner can just sit there and let this happen. Downtown is complete, it's, I hate looking across the street and seeing this one and then looking across the street and another one whose roof is caving in. It's just, something needs to be done. We've got so much work in this downtown that needs so much work and it's, it's 300,000, it's beyond that for just one building. There is so much more that can, that can happen. And there's so many things that we could do to make our downtown look so great, because the other ones in Arizona, the small little Main Streets are so quaint and they listen. The townspeople listen, but nobody is listening, not here. Why? Why is nobody taking a stronger effort for this? So yes, I'm a little bit upset. I'm beyond, because I remember every single piece of that building and it goes back years for me. When my uncle would sit at that bar and he would take his fake eye out and put it in the shot glass and say, "Watch it for me." There's, there's heart there. You can't put that on a lot of buildings here, but there's, for historical preservation, it's more than just a building, it's more than just physical structure. There's heart inside of it and there's none of that. None of that here.
I appreciate your feedback. So, and, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I want to just say something else. I think fire, requiring people to have fire insurance is, is fine, but having people who get permits or don't get permits and they're not being enforced, that Cocapelli's came in my lifespan here. That's less than ten years. So where were people when they allowed him to come in, open that bar without making sure that the electrical facilities inside were adequate? It's just another example, as was the General Store, as was the building at the other end of the building of the town. I don't know why we can't learn from our mistakes.
And, wait, wait, if I can may for one moment. And to that, I do believe that over the past few years, our new staff that has come aboard has looked at those events, has looked at what has happened in the past and they've been making proactive changes to ensure that that doesn't happen. I also agree with Chair Knight that we do need to take a stronger stance and I would like our staff, in addition to looking at, you know, fire insurance on Main Street, looking at some of these buildings that are abandoned, that haven't been utilized, their owners are nowhere to be found. What are they doing and what can we do to bring them back so that way we have life on Main Street? I know that's a vision of not only our historic advisory committee, but as well as council.
So I'm on the glasses half-full. There's always opportunity in things that happen like this and when Mr. Billingsley first came to town, we had several talks about the opportunities because he's familiar through, I think, his family in Tucson, but we, that's a large space and that's exactly the kind of space that could attract an outside investor, even with all this lien and this problem. So I don't know if any of you are familiar with the old Ellsworth Brewing Company, Microbrewery in Queen Creek? It's a very cool place and I just read the article about how they came to be there. Queen Creek's Economic Development Manager placed an ad in something called Choose AZ Brews and these microbrewery owners answered the ad and went there and built this fabulous microbrewery. And so I look at this space and it's large enough that a commercial establishment could come in and make some money, because a lot of our buildings are really too small for that kind of investment. I see opportunity here and I'd like us to start looking at what can we do to proactively maybe encourage somebody to come in. I understand they'd have to negotiate with the property owner, but heck, some money has got to be better than nothing for the owner and that's the possibility I see with a space this large.
Mr. Billingsley?
Madam Mayor, I absolutely agree. As a matter of fact, what you're going to see probably in the next sixty days is a joint effort between the town and Pinau County to actively market and bid the old Recorder's Office, the old Elections Office, that lot. We have, Jen and I have actually written the RFP for that, provided that to the county and we're going to do that in partnership. We're hoping that that's successful and that we can go on down through the street and continue to do that with those type of partnerships. And quite honestly, one of the biggest challenges that Florence has had is depressed property values. But if we can start... But if we can start having some successes, and there are a number of things going on right now, as a matter of fact, we're going to have a presentation, Larry, at our next meeting on November 5th. We've been working very hard on infill in town. This lot, the Recorder's Lot, would be an infill project. We've been working really hard on infill and marketing for infill, and we will have a developer coming in on November the 5th that has purchased 31 lots in Florence to specifically do infill. So property values are coming up. There's a higher demand here than there probably has been in a decade, and I think that we're going to bear some fruit from that effort. So I appreciate that.
Oh, Ms. Harrison, would you, do you have something to, and as well as anybody who's in the audience as well. This is a work session and...
On those, the new infills that are coming, are they coming to Historic Florence, or they're coming to Anthem?
Historic Florence.
Florence.
We're doing infill in Historic Florence, yes.
Commissioner Reed mentioned something about that building in the back, on Bailey, that I didn't hear of a complete answer to that. She said she'd like to see it stay and not be torn down, and I didn't hear anything that said why it couldn't be allowed to remain.
So Mr. Allen had the picture up, and when he presented it was the, can you go back to the picture, Ms. Lisa?
You can also have him talk to her directly after.
Oh, did I miss something? If I did, I apologize.
Okay, he'll re-explain it, that's all right.
All right.
Just better with visuals.
This is the area that you're speaking of, ma'am, on Bailey Street, this house here. Let's call it general use. That actually, there was a few structural things that need to be taken care of, but the structural report listed that it could stay, that it was not to be, did not have to be demolished. Again, that's why I was referring to this area, because it's supported by this wall. So this could be self-standing, it's self-supportive. There would be some repairs that would have to be done to it, but nothing that was to decide that it needed to be structurally demolished on it. All these areas here, what's all compromised in this area. Yep, so basically because of this corner here, again, it would be, a process would have to happen to separate the two units so that they're structurally independent, and then some repairs for it to be livable, still be a viable building there. But it would not have to be leveled on it.
Part of that whole project?
It's, this isn't even, I don't believe this is even part of the bid process for the demolition of that part of the building.
So we're not voting on that part of it?
No, I don't believe that. I believe that's to stay. Is that correct, Chris? On the...
As of today, the cost estimates that we've received are for everything on the property. Because that's a worst-case scenario. That doesn't mean that we can't alter that, or your guys' motion can't address that. But it was a worst-case scenario where we have everything on the property.
Well, that's interesting. That's what I would have proposed.
Looking for a motion from the Commission on our recommendation on action, and if you want to add that to your motion.
Before we make a motion, I'd like to just finish on that building. Does I, so does that building still have a roof? Was that, any of that damaged in all the fires?
On the general use building?
Yes.
I believe the structural report mentioned that it was not, did not need to be...
So that means that's...
Yeah, I believe it was structurally, it was fine on the report. I can...
I thought it's, I thought on the north wall, there was a problem with it, but...
Okay, Commissioner Reed, do you have a motion?
Okay, yes, I do. I move that we go ahead with the demolition permit with the proviso that the general use building, if it's feasible, be saved.
Recomending to the Council.
Recommending that to the Council.
And there is a second to the motion? You understand what we're doing here? Is trying to keep that little corner, but not stopping the town from moving ahead and removing the, all the other damage. I'll second the motion. Okay. Commissioner Smith seconds it. All those in favor?
I...
Those opposed?
Motion is carried. Okay, thank you very much. We'd like you to stay with us for the rest of the meeting, because we are still going to be talking about the same structure.
And I thank the Council for asking us to participate in this process.
So as we know that this is a non-budgeted expense, so the first thing we want to talk about is where the town of Florence would take this from if it does end up being to the tune of $300,000. So as you can see, this is an emergency expenditure, and we've listed possibilities to total $300,000. So the traffic signal that is at...
Hunt and 79.
Hunt and 79, we still don't have the warrant for that. So it's, we're pretty sure it's not going to happen in this fiscal year, so it can be re-added to next fiscal year's agenda. Vehicles, we have one police department vehicle still remaining, and a vehicle for the fire department that have not yet been purchased, and that's to the tune of $94,000. We have flooring for, that would be $40,000. We have council projects, and mind you, we did not touch the one that was $100,000 for economic development and any potential that we would need to spend in the economic development arena. But we did include $45,000, that would be for the public relations, training, tourism, and nonprofits. And of course, town manager contingency. Now, because we don't know whether it's going to be $69,000 or whether it's going to be $300,000, this would be the order that we would take the items in. So if it was $100,000, it would be the traffic signal. If it was $194,000, we'd be looking at the vehicles. If Council wants to move that in a different order, we can move that order, or just understand that staff is going to, these are the places that we have to look for money, and this is where we would be looking for emergency money. And the only reason why we're looking to these items, too, is because the departments, we apologized already today at our staff meeting, the departments that have not proceeded with processing these expenditures, we can vary, we can go out and say, "Please stop before you expend the dollars." Other things that were included in the capital project, they've already been done, i.e. the building being painted, other things, the vehicles that were purchased tonight, the three police department vehicles, there's no way to come in and get things that we've already expended. So we're looking at what's remaining in our budget. And so we do want to talk about, and then the option number two, that our Finance Director, Joe Jarvis, did come up with. If Council wants to keep all these items in the budget, we can always go to option two, and that is using unbudgeted funds from the 2017-18 revenues over expenditures. Joe, do you want to talk a little bit about that option?
There we go. Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, at the end of every fiscal year, we review to see how expenditures compare to revenue. And the unaudited number at this time is 566,000. We collected $566,000 more in the general fund than we spent. And so that is where I'm coming up with this additional option for your consideration of using the unbudgeted funds. Right now, at the end of each fiscal year, if there is excess revenue over expenditures in the general fund, we take that amount of money and put it in Fund 11, which is the capital, the general capital fund. The general capital fund is the fund that we use to pay for our capital expenses.
Thank you. And Joe, can you just explain that if we use that money from option number two, we will not be over our expenditure limitation, correct?
That is correct. We will not be over our expenditure limitation. As the Council and the community is aware, there is a, there is a home rule in place at this time that we're operating under, and that has a specific dollar amount. And last fiscal year, we were $10 million less than our expenditure limitation. So I have, I am comfortable spending an additional potentially $300,000, and we're not going to be near our expenditure limitation.
Okay, clarifying question. Do we need to distinguish as a Council whether we would prefer option one or option two at this evening, or can that be done at a future time, once we have a more finite amount? We can come back to you at a budget workshop, if you like, and let you know exactly how much money was spent. The bottom line is, we're going to be spending the money. So we wanted to give you the options. We can always take it later from projects.
Well, Mayor, I'd like for us to consider another option, and that's, let's go find this owner, wherever he is, and sit down and talk to him and say, "Okay, you know, do you want to sell this to us?" You know, I'd rather offer him some money, and let's get ownership of the property, because we're just throwing, you know, money away here. I hate to say it that way, but you know...
Even if, even if we do that tonight, what we're talking about is, we're talking about basically abating the situation. So if the property owner came in today and said, "We want to donate this property to the town of Florence," we would bring it back to you and we would say, "Council, the property's been donated. Do you want to accept it?" And you'd say yes or no. I'm assuming you'd say yes. But then the expenses would still be present to be able to go through and do the demolition work for all of it, but the one area that we're not going to be demoing. And so the expenditure still would go forward. The only thing that we would not be doing if that happened would be going through and leaning the property.
Well, I just have a problem with $300,000, you know, for tearing a building down. I would think with our Public Works Department, they got front-end loaders, they'd go down and knock that building down in a day's time.
In Phase 1 report, where they test the materials, and Mr. Solis can speak to this because he's the head of the Public Works Department, but when they go in and they test for those materials, they have to be handled in a specific manner that I do not believe we are qualified to handle.
I got it. Well, we haven't figured that out yet, because we haven't inspected it. So I think, once we get that, I think this is rather premature to make a decision tonight, until we get Chris's report back as to what it's going to take to demolish the building. And if we are going to have to do, you know, something where we have to tent it or something to that extent...
That would be through the contractor. So the way staff put this together is, we came in and we said, "Well, let's move to the next item, and that'll be helpful."
Sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Billingsley?
I want to answer a couple of the Councilmember's questions. Number one, with the age of that building and the times when that construction was done, there will be lead, and there will be asbestos in that building. And we don't have the training, nor would we want to assume the liability to do that if it turns out. Number two, once again, it's very similar to the conversation that I had with the board member earlier. We can't just go take taxpayers' money and buy a property. The only way we could do that legally is if we have a public use for that property. So we would have to identify a public use and invest in that public use. We can't take the taxpayers' money and buy a piece of property for our hopes of selling it someday or making an investment in the community. It needs to have a public use identified.
Well, I'd rather for you to make us an offer on that than just us come up with $300,000, and we're not going to get a dime of it back.
But in big picture, I do, I do appreciate Kathy's vision of even that microbrewery, and how much life it really has infused into that little corner of Queen Creek. So I mean, there's hope and there's potential for Main Street. And there's options, and there's opportunities. And I know this is challenging to move through.
But I, we're reading, Commissioner Reed and myself, about the tourism line and the $45,000. I mean, I think that when we're looking at this horrific problem we have on Main Street, and it's not just that, we don't know when or if the Circle K's are going to be sold or fixed up. So I think all the more reason if we could work with Mr. Billingsley to come up with an economic development outreach plan, right? Go proactive on this and budget some few more dollars along with all this demolition activity, to really actively try and bring, because if you bring in, if you have somebody on the line for the county property, someone's already interested, and that's going to make the next one that much more interested. If you get two or three of them, there's hope.
So I have a lineup of questions, and I've been holding them, so I'm just going to let them out. Okay, so back to the budget. There was option one or option two. I like, I want to propose another option, option three. And once, obviously, I think we need to get the number. That's imperative. But option number three, we could possibly use both of those, if that's an option. So rather than just saying, "We're going to stop all spending for all these line items, period," or "We're just going to take all the money out of this fund," if we can, rather going through with a big axe, going through with a fine-tooth comb, and picking out which projects we're going to stop here, and then maybe taking some of those excess funds and balancing it a little bit more, so we're not taking a direct hit from one or the other.
Yeah, and it will depend on how much, and so, and we will do that, we'll come back to you, we'll report on that after we get the exact amount.
So that was one of them. I know we can't talk about the public use option, Brent, but I have a very general question. If we were to use something for general use, how long do we have to own that property for that public use?
I don't think that's defined in statute. Typically, the way that the state has looked at it is, if it's for, right-of-way for a road, or for a water line, or for a wastewater treatment plant, you're not going to have a problem. If you buy a piece of land similar to City North, and it's prognosticating on future development or the intent to sell, then you got big problems. And I'm not sure it's a, there's a timeline associated with that. The thought is, from the Goldwater Institute's perspective, it's fleecing the taxpayers because you could spend an exorbitant amount of money, and then a developer, so for example, we could spend $300,000 on a property, and a developer, I mean, the property values of that lot are probably less than $20,000, and then sell it to somebody for $20,000. Clearly, that's a gift clause issue and a misuse of taxpayer funds. So those, those challenges are tough. Could you build a new gym? Yes, you could. But looking to Mr. Hawkins' comment, then you've gone from a $300,000 investment to a million-dollar investment on that same parcel. In a perfect world, it would be great if the property owner just came to us and said, "I have no interest in the property, I'll give it to the town, and you guys abate it." That would be a very good case scenario to solve a lot of these issues. So, hope that helped.
That's what I was wanting you to go asking.
So, along that same line, I know that's a rabbit hole, I'm not going to jump down. But I do have the issue with spending $300,000, and then it's still being somebody else's, or just sitting there idly while they have an opportunity to pay it back. So if that's, I don't want to go too, personally, I don't like going too far down this direction without even knowing what that realm holds. For me, I like more information. And then as far as the saving the room, now I, I just want to touch on that real quick. Saving the room, it sounds to me like a great idea. I love that. I love preserving the adobe and having that history there. My concerns come from, if we're going to talk about, say, a microbrewery that's going to come in and build, would that adobe room somehow hinder them? Because now they've got a historic property on, a building on this property, if they come in and say, "I want to build this microbrewery, and here it is, here's my plans," and you say, "Wait, you can't do this, this is now a historic property, we've got a historic building on there, you can't rip it down, you can't build, attach to this wall, you've got all these stipulations." Was that going to hinder the growth even further down the road? So that, to me, is my biggest reservation with that, that I'd like us to discuss before we say, "Yep, we want to save that room, for sure, that's what we're doing." And that's it, that's all my thing. So that's just discussion points for you guys.
I think that with Mr. Harmer, a case could be made from the district. It has been proven in other locations that having an anchor historic angle draws people. And so while it might be a little bit more of a headache to build around, that could actually be a selling point. So it can go both ways. I hear what you're saying, and I think the awkward part I was discussing with the Chair is that, again, we're not the property owners, so we save this building. It does not appear that the property owner wants to do anything to save it, and that's why I was asking about the state of the roof. I personally don't want to watch another adobe building melt away in front of my eyes, then we can't do anything about it. I know, there's no easy answers here.
If I may, Mayor? One of the major points I think we're missing here in coming up with all these wonderful solutions, is that there's a sense of urgency to get this done. And we can certainly explore all of the suggestions that have been made, but we have to protect our residents, our visitors, and the town from potential liability. If there were an accident where someone were injured, or there were a life lost, who do you think they would go to with the deepest pockets? It wouldn't be the owner who has already expressed absolutely... It wouldn't be the owner, who has already expressed absolutely no concern for the welfare of the town. And I think that we need to authorize our town staff to do whatever is necessary to protect us from any dangers that might exist on this property. And personally, I know that we will, and the town will do what is the very best for the town, whether it means saving one small portion of that building, or abating the asbestos, whatever it happens to be. The $300,000 may not be the final number, we don't know, but we at least need to authorize the town staff to proceed with finding out what it's going to take, and how much it's going to cost.
Very well said, yes. Mr. Billingsley?
To, to answer Councilwoman Larson's question, or to respond to your statement, I really appreciated the way that Ms. Reed made the motion from the district, if, if able to, to save that building, because Chris pointed out to me, the report doesn't say that the building is, is great, and it's in wonderful shape. It says that there is a large hole in the adobe wall that needs to be repaired, and that the roof framing is, is damaged. The building would need to be adequately blocked, and diaphragm sheeting would have to be added, as well as wall bracing. The town won't be doing any of that, associated with a demo project. That would be the property owner's job to do, and when the other building is demolished, that building might fall down just from the action of demolishing the other building, with the challenges that it has. So, we can do our best to try and save that building, but I, I don't want anybody to leave here tonight thinking that we're going to block the building, we're going to fix the roof, we're going to repair the adobe wall, because that's not what we're going to do. We'll do the best that we can.
Okay. Well said. That being, I'll call for the question.
I have one other question, before you do that. The...
I have already called for the question.
Okay.
Okay.
Our contract is, is contrary to what the Tucson, the Tucson contract says, $200,000.
Wait a second, wait, she, the question was called for?
Okay.
There's not a motion on the floor?
But that's why I need a motion.
I make a motion that we authorize the town manager to use the City of Tucson contract number 18194601 job order for demolition services to solicit, negotiate, and enter into a contract with a selective vendor, or vendors, in an amount not to exceed $300,000 for demolition, abatement, remediation, removal, and disposal of any structures, including debris formerly constituting the Coacapelli Moon Saloon, APN 200-49-017A, located at 255 North Main Street, Florence.
Second?
Somebody wanted to add, saving that building, although I understand what the town manager's saying, if we save it, to what avail will they be to save it? When we have a property owner who is not willing to do anything. But I will add that in there, just for the sake of the record, since that's what the commission desires.
I will second with that addition.
Now, can I ask a question?
Wait, motion and a second?
You have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. Well, once the motion, once the motion is out there, and a second is there, you have to vote on it, according to Robert's Rules of Orders. I would have if the question wasn't already called, but there's still item C that falls under that as well. So, yes, go ahead and ask your question.
I, I will go ahead and answer the question.
Thank you.
So, the job order contract does say $250,000, and we did this two ways. One, we don't know that the contract will be up to $300,000. If so, we included vendor, or parentheses S for vendors, in case we need to include more than one vendors. But also, during that contract, it does say that the chief purchasing officer does have a right to authorize expenditure over the $250,000. So we're covered multiple directions.
Okay, good. That was my question.
All right, thank you for that patience. Okay, item number D on this is the discussion and possible action of the Florence Town Council, authorizing the town manager, the town's attorneys, and other representatives of the town, on behalf of the town of Florence, without further order of the mayor and common council of the town, to do all such acts and things, including the full prosecution, seeking demolition, remediation, abatement, removal, and disposal of any structures, including the debris formerly constituting the Coacapelli Moon Saloon, tax parcel 200-49-17A, located at the 255 North Main Street, Florence, Arizona, the property, and to pursue any and all actions, including executing, filing, and delivering all such notices, assessments, complaints, appeals, liens, certificates, recordings, filings, pleadings, correspondence, proceedings, agreements, and other documents, as may be necessary or convenient, to be executed, filed, and delivered on behalf of the town, in order to carry out the demolition, abatement, remediation, and removal of any structures, including the debris formerly constituting the Coacapelli Moon Saloon, including the assessment recording lien for closure, sale, or purchase of the property to satisfy the liens. What this item does is, it just gives that additional permission to move forward in the matter of the items B and C that we all discussed, and agreed upon to move forward.
I'll make a motion to approve what the mayor just read, because I'm not saying all that again.
I'll second. Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Okay, so, ladies and gentlemen, that is the end of our verbalized work session. I do see some members in the audience. Is there anybody who would like to say anything regarding these items? Yes, sir?
Just while we have the HDEC group and everyone here, I just, it's a heartbreaker for all of us, is what's occurred. The, the cautionary tale from this incident is that outside of some radical change, we will have, will have more fires. We have a clear pattern going all the way back to the 90s of losing a building about every four years. We're going to lose more if we don't radically change what we're doing. So, we can spend the money on the back end, or the front end, or we need to be more creative, or you can create guiding coalitions, or whatever we do, we can't keep doing the same thing and expecting a different result. So as your fire chief, I just need to, this is a cautionary tale for all of us, that we, we really need to make some adjustments.
Chief, isn't that the definition, definition of insanity? Doing the same thing over and over again without getting results?
And expecting a different result, yes.
Yeah, you know what I meant. Ms. Barriola, come on up. Glad to see you here this evening.
Thank you. I hadn't planned to say anything this evening, but I just want to mention, when the Silver King burned in 1995, that Florence Preservation Foundation had purchased it, and fortunately, we had funding in place. We immediately got the contractor down here, first thing the next morning, to shore it up. We had just had a meeting of our board, we were, first phase, we were going to put the roof on the entire building. So, once it burned, like, the next week, we had to revamp, but we were able to shore it up. I believe we already had the chain link fencing around it, so we did shore up that one wall, and redo the construction documents. So, if, but what I mentioned is, is we did have the funding in place to save at least that one building, the brick building that didn't completely burn, although we did have to actually take down the second story and rebuild that. But we were able to save that, simply because we were prepared and had the funds. Same thing on the Chapel of the Hila, when the east wall failed, adobe wall fell during a flood. We already had a heritage fund in place, and we immediately got the architect down to save that. Same thing on the Clark House, we were already under construction on that, but the south wall, adobe wall fell on that, and since it was already under construction, we were just able to save that. So that's three buildings, historic buildings, that we were able to save, and we have in Florence today, simply because we were prepared to do that. In this case, there is no funding in place to go in, and, you know, to a million dollars or so, to restore it. Thank you.
You're very welcome. And, you know, ownership of those buildings also do play an important factor as well.
And also, thanks to our state legislators for sweeping the preservation funds as well, so...
Yes, ma'am. Any member of the chair have any closing comments?
Oh, Bonnie has something.
Well, since Vice Mayor Woolridge mentioned the Heritage Fund, I am on the Arizona Heritage Alliance. I'm the secretary of that organization, and we continue to work attempting to get some type of heritage funds back. So we are still, we still working on that.
Good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bless you. Any members of the board? All right, well, we did officially close out, minus the adjournment, so with that, I need a motion to adjourn?
Can I get everybody voting on it, so that we will adjourn you all at the same time? If everyone can vote on the motion to adjourn, we'll adjourn both meetings at the same time.
Okay. Need a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign. We are all adjourned.